Hi, I'm Richard Tannen. Most of you know me. I'm here to talk about insurance verifications for district employees. On September 30th, 2011, I ran an insurance verification on my minor children. At that time and that same day, I emailed board members of the results of that insurance verification. In that email, I had stated my concerns about potential insurance fraud, and also my concerns about who or whom was involved in the approval process to grant my minor children health insurance. There has been no response regarding my initial email, so I'm here to talk about it. I reran the insurance verification again on 11/11 to see if anything had been done about this subject, and the results are here if you'd like to see them. Nothing has been done that's actually a person that's claiming my children as his dependents who works here in the district. So, you know, I went online and I looked at your policy regarding dependents and who rates insurance. And your policy actually follows Section 1167 in the United States Code. And your policy is through GA, NUT. I like that. I did that. That was a great idea. The policy I'm questioning is 4154, Section D. It states, "Nothing in this section shall be used to modify the definition of dependent as used in the Internal Revenue Taxation Code with respect to coverage." And then I looked up the IRS code as related to dependents. And to claim a dependent, there's age restrictions, residency requirements, and support tests. And a support test for somebody who's a qualifying relative, you must provide more than 50% of the person's support. The person who's claiming my children as their dependent does not provide 50% of my children's support. So, this person cannot claim my children as my children benefits. In the past couple of years, I've been to these meetings. I've read online the financial state of the district. And this is something that the district shouldn't be paying for. We shouldn't be providing my children benefits that they don't deserve. I'm asking the district to immediately stop providing health insurance benefits to my minor children, because they are not qualified and they do not deserve to have them. I would like to be notified immediately when these benefits cease. I would like to know who was involved, actually, in approving this. This benefit was not done during open enrollment. This was actually started in August of this year. Your open enrollment is beginning of the year. And the last thing I'm asking for is potentially, this is just involving my children. It may be more widespread to other employees of the district. I would like, you know, I work for an employer who asks for birth certificates and IRS tax returns in order for them to provide health care for our children. And I see the district is struggling financially, and this is just something that shouldn't be paid for. I'd like to know immediately when this stops. Thank you.
I'm Inez Priscino, owner and CEO of G Design Group, also alumni at Fillmore High School. What I'm going to speak about is regarding bullying and the situation dealing with my nephew, which resumes to this day. So, does my son have to be stabbed before you guys can do anything? Pretty much. This is part of a conversation my sister had with the principal of Fillmore High School regarding the situation of bullying on my nephew, which is a junior. Over the last few months, my nephew became a victim of bullying by gang members, confronted and assaulted more than twice on and off school grounds. Our mission is to provide education through shared responsibility in a safe, supportive environment for all students to meet the challenges of a global society. That is our district's mission statement. This mission statement, I feel since I was a student, has proven to be folly and untrue by allowing gang members, bullies, and other harassers to run free with a mere slap on the wrist. I confess myself to the board and the general public to be disappointed by the lack of effort our administrators have done. Our school security has also failed to provide a safe environment. To tell my nephew that he had to have done something to provoke them into an onslaught is ridiculous. Staff security told my nephew, "If it walks like a duck and looks like a duck, then it's a duck." Because my nephew dresses in one size large clothing and because he wears a hair certain way, then he is in fact a gang member. To be told by an officer in a private meeting without the consent of my sister being there that he has a hit on him and he is a target is irresponsible on all accounts. A way to change this is to hold the staff and students accountable for their actions. As an uncle and alumni, I want to see more than here at Fillmore Unified. I believe we, as a public, need to see a zero tolerance for bullying down. I trust we don't want a human life on your hands as protectors of the policies that protect this school and all those who are involved. On several accounts, I have asked for the policies regarding bullying, and I have yet to get a response. If a student hits another student in front of a school official or bullies a student and the staff sees this, then adequate measures should be taken. Picture this: suicide because the student was bullied into believing that they had nowhere safe to take refuge; murder because your student was killed because he defended himself from the bullying; lawsuits because the school and the district failed to properly reprimand and take measures to put an end to this heinous crime. Do we really want to see this get this far? I don't. And I will urge the removal and replacement to those who bullied because our officials continue to fail to do their job. I am begging and I am imploring the school board to take more serious measures to create a safe environment, to make students confident enough to talk to officials and staff so they don't have to fear backlash from the bullying, to be firm on punishments, because in keeping students here and not doing anything for their bullying, it is not helping them, but it is creating more detrimental developments that will, in the future, result in crimes far greater than calling a child a faggot. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Green. I'm the principal of Fillmore Middle School. And this evening, I'm joined by Bobby Rodrick, our assistant principal, Jane Flowers, ELD lead, Emily Dubois, Science Department Chair, George Fisher, Math Department Chair, Heather Atwood, Sixth Grade Department Chair, and Phyllis Garrett, PE Department Chair. We're here this evening to present our revised site plan, which you know includes a review of our student performance data, our site effectiveness in meeting state and federal academic targets, a plan for improvement, and our budget, which is tied to that plan. Each of us here are presenting different aspects of our site plan. We'll talk about who we are, how we'll perform beneath our state targets. We'll talk a little bit about our program improvement status, our AGB experience back in October, how we expect to exit program improvement, how we're improving teaching and learning at our site, how we collaborate, our professional development opportunities ahead, and what types of intervention we're putting together for our students. We want you to know that we're a team at Fillmore Middle School, and we expect that we'll succeed together this year. I hope by the end of this presentation that you'll see our main focus at the middle school is on the teaching and the learning. And with that, I'll introduce Bobby Rodrick. Just go to the next piece.
Okay, so my presentation is on the purpose beliefs and goals. At Fillmore Middle School, we have two fundamental beliefs. One, that all students can learn and will make progress on the state assessments. Also, we have six priority goals. Those six priority goals are reading and writing, student achievement in reading and writing, and mathematics. Also, a close achievement gap, to close that achievement gap between the subgroups and raise proficiency among English language learners and students with disabilities. To do this, we're going to be using student data, student data, collaboration time, and other resources to improve teaching at the middle school and learning amongst the students. Professional development is going to be provided for staff using technology that will enhance instruction, and, of course, most importantly, increase in parent involvement. The school vision is, the primary goal of FMS is for our students to reach educational excellence by reaching levels of proficiency or above on the state academic assessment. Intellectual development, along with social, emotional, and physical development, is essential for students to reach their fullest potential. And the mission statement at Fillmore Middle School is, "Together we will think, believe, create, and achieve."
Good comment. I like her nice succinct mission statement.
Thank you. I can't take credit for that. The staff members developed that, but it is catchy. I'm excited.
It took us years to develop this.
They told me they spent weeks on that. You know, truly, I'm excited to be a part of Fillmore Middle School. I'm seeing a lot of excitement there. And I just want to say that 830 excited students are ready to learn each and every day, and I'm excited to be a part of that. Good evening. Here's a snapshot of our student demographics. We have American Indian, Asian, Black, African American. Majority of our students are Hispanic and white. Our homes are multi-level, with the majority of our speakers, the majority of our students speaking English or Spanish. Here's our breakdown of language proficiency. We have English only. We have EL students, English language learners. All of those students are enrolled in an ELD class. And we have the immersion program. And then we have mainstream, where we have students who have one period of ELD and one period of their Language Arts. We also have a block of an English language development intermediate, where it's two periods.
Just to make a clarification. I think I'm right, but please guide me. I know positive English only is obvious. But then the differences between the following three, if you could just give me some clarification.
I certainly will. Certainly will. English learner would be, an English learner who is in an ELD class. So, they're identified as an English learner. We have students who are initially fluent, English proficient. We call them IFEP. This identification would be based on their home language survey upon entering our school system. If they mention that they speak a language other than English on a home language survey, we would then administer an English language test. And if it's Spanish, we have the Spanish test. So, we do a determination where we would score their self-test. If they score at early advanced on all of the domains, that would be listening, speaking, reading, and writing, they score early advanced, then they are deemed to be proficient in English. We would then basically consider them as an English-only student. We do have a file on them, and we do keep records that they were identified upon entering our system as having taken the self and passed at early advanced at all domains.
Okay, I just kind of repeat back what I think I understood. So, basically, the second column is someone who does not know English but is learning it.
Acquiring English. They're in our English Language Development Program, and they are placed in an ELD class.
And the second one, basically, what you're saying is, for example, me, when I was a kid, my home language was Spanish. So, I would probably be in the third column there.
You would be, basically, if you had taken the English test and passed at being early advanced on the self in all of the domains, English speaking, or English, you would then be an IFEP, yes?
And then the fourth one is basically someone who started off in Spanish but has completely gone to English and has passed all the tests, right?
Students that have been reclassified. They have been in our ELD program. And we would then look at their CST score. Their CST score needs to be 325 or above on the CST. And then it would be early advanced or advanced on all of the domains. Our goal here, our goal at the middle school is that we do frequent monitoring. We want to make sure that all of our students are accurately placed. So, as soon as our self scores come in, as soon as our CST scores come in, we write queries. We want to make sure that everybody has, every student has an opportunity to be in an appropriate placement. If ELD is not the most appropriate, we want to make sure everyone has equal access to the curriculum, mainstream. We also have students who are both English language learners and RSP students. A student can then reclassify through their IDP as well. We do, once a student has been reclassified, we monitor their progress for two years to make sure they're making progress and they're being successful outside of the ELD program.
So, with that knowledge of our population, we set our goals very high. Currently, we can definitely, as Jane just said, our English learners are in a Language Arts class, oftentimes as part of their ELD, too, sometimes, right? ELD and Language Arts class?
A block.
A block, a block, thank you, yes. This year, we have moved some sixth graders into pre-algebra based on three years of their math CST scores. They're proficient for those three years. They need to be in pre-algebra. We put them there. We have some seventh graders, in the same way, seventh graders in algebra, based on their CST scores for three years. And one of our goals for next year, because these seventh graders will need to go somewhere next year, we will be offering geometry next year for eighth graders, as needed. We also have honors courses for English Language Arts, math, and history in seventh grade and eighth grade level for those courses.
Next year?
And, thank you. And next year, we do plan to have a science honors class, or two. We do remember, though, that one of our main goals, of course, is to improve our CST scores. We have a chart here showing the past three years for each subject. One thing I want to note is that it's not for English Language Arts, history, or Language Arts and math. It's not separated here by grade level. Some specific things that I want to make sure are clear. Sixth graders, seventh graders, eighth graders take an English Language Arts test and a math test. Eighth graders, I always say that you guys are lucky ducks. You could take four tests. Eighth graders take the history test, which covers the curriculum for sixth, seventh, and eighth. And they take that test as an eighth grader. And then for science, the state test is given in eighth grade, but it's only for eighth grade curriculum. And, don't make me say those names.
Say it. Do it.
Do it, do it.
Well, I ought to look at science first.
She's the department chair.
Because, that's... We have seen great improvements over the past few years. Just keep it better, better, but... But the other ones dip up and down and increasing, decreasing.
Not pieces of each.
I was really enjoying this. I did want to double check, does every board member have a copy of the site plan? Fillmore Middle School is identified as program improvement year five. You can't get any higher than that, and we've won out. We don't like it. We feel the pressure of being in program improvement. We think we understand what we need to do. We're talking about teaching and learning all the time. We are identified in program improvement because our proficiency targets in math, English, science, and history have not been met repeatedly for the last nine years. We're working together to adjust our program. And we see it happening in science. Those kids are performing better, and their students are performing on the state test at higher proficiency levels each year. So, we know the capacity is there, and we're going to do that in all of our core courses. We're collaborating in many teams. We have a leadership team. And you've met the majority of the department chairs, but there are a few that we're unable to attend tonight. We have about, it looks like 10 people participating in pulling apart our programs, looking at how we're spending our time and our efforts and our money. And we're working together to design a program that works for every single student to include intervention when students are not learning. Our school site council meets a minimum of once a month and are available twice a month. And this is the committee comprised of parents and teachers and community members, myself. And we're talking about the budget a lot lately. We're talking about intervention. We have a laptop cart with 36 computers in it. We're looking at how we can get that set up, so then we'll have three testing labs for students. We have an ELAC committee that meets once a month, right after the meet and greets. And that's our parents of English learners. And they help to keep us informed of the needs and the difficulties of English learners. And they work with us on developing intervention. We're trying to improve parent participation. They also took a look at the site plan and our budget. And they looked at student performance data for English learners as compared to the other groups and subgroups on campus. And we're very interested in helping with their children and their community to pull those scores up. And our favorite group is the Alternative Covering Board, also known as AGB. And they came through in October. They spent four days with us, October 15 through 18, right after the October break. Every single classroom was visited. Every teacher was visited. Students were interviewed. Staff members were interviewed. Departments were interviewed. They really pulled apart our program. We have some informal recommendations that we'll talk about as we move forward. And we're waiting to hear the final report in December. Because we know of some areas that need improvement, we are not waiting for the final report to take action. We have implemented the strategy of checking for understanding. This is a frequent stop the instruction, check to see how the students are doing with what you just taught. Make sure that if you see a gap in the learning, that you go back over it, present it another way. But you make sure that all of your students are tracking with you as you're teaching. And the lesson preparation, which was a bloody process for us. We've adopted the Fillmore Unified School District template, which is very detailed and difficult to work with, very time-intensive. However, just in the last three, four weeks that we've been using it, I'm already hearing less groaning, and a lot of growth has taken place through this process. What this means is that we're planning for every single minute of the classroom. We are planning where we think that some students may not be following the lesson. And we're planning for English learners in the room. We have a long-term vision for these plans. We recognize that we need to utilize research-based proven strategies. We're not relying on our own experience and our years of teaching. And there are a lot of years here we are a seasoned staff, a very mature staff. But all of us are benefiting from going back into the books and reading about strategies that are proven to pick up all kids. We are making sure that every lesson is tied to an essential state standard. So, this means that we have pared down the curriculum to those things that the state has identified as the important pieces of each course. And we tie our benchmark assessments to that, our pacing guides. And then on the lesson plan at the top, it will indicate which state standard is being taught. And as I review lesson plans or visit classrooms, I'm able to look that up. We have a nice condensed book of the standards. And I can see how the lesson's being taught and how that compares to the level of rigor that the state standard deems necessary. Our curriculum is tied to the essential standards. And our focus is how we're going to get at a program improvement. We realize that this isn't going to be about programs that we institute and things that we seem to be married to. We need to look at the student performance and what that says about their ability to master the concepts. So, we're looking at the teaching, and we are looking at the learning. Every single staff member takes ownership for developing expertise in data analysis. We are not relying on that person in the district office to do our data crunching for us. Every single one of us is going to be an expert in data. We know that our instruction has to be effective for every single student in the room. Together, we are looking at student performance based on first quarter grades. We are working hard to figure out what would be the best intervention for each of the students who did not make a 2.0 GPA. We're studying the literature together. We have professional development lined up. Already, we've had a really great one that Dr. Nishino lined up, or maybe it was Michael Johnson, through, it was on math instructional strategies. And I know I saw some of them there, and it was wonderful. And talked about inviting an energy into your teaching. We have data-wise training coming up in a week. We, I guess we have another math coming up in January.
January 3.
And I have a conversation right now with the county going, hopefully that they're going to bring some professional development to our site. And then we're going to work with the high school and try to include them in those things that we collaborate on together, like math, because we share algebra and geometry. Our collaboration time looks a little bit different than it has in the past. Our collaboration time is focused on the teaching and how the students are doing in class. We're looking for strategies that were effective in presenting lessons, and we're sharing those. We have allocated a large amount of money in the budget to ensure that our teachers are able to be released from their class, and we're paying for subs so that the teachers can work together to make sure the pacing guides are on track, the scope and sequences are aligned to state standards, and that we have benchmark assessments every quarter to monitor how the students are doing towards the state standards. We have a plan to implement the opportunity where teachers can go visit each other's classrooms and see what's going on within their departments, or maybe outside, so that we can broaden our scope across the campus. In order to, tell me when to stop, okay?
No, keep going.
No, keep going. We are analyzing our programs and the services we provide. We're looking for the gaps to find out where the instruction is not aligned to the state standards. We think it is, though. We're looking for that each course have the proper curriculum documents in place. And I'm collecting those as we go so that I have a nice finder of all these documents to review often. But that's our scope and sequence pacing guides and our benchmark assessments. We're looking for where we're lacking. Is our curriculum truly providing access to every single student, regardless of their program stats? We talked about the lesson plans. We are working hard to create a variety of teaching strategies. You've heard this called differentiated instruction. That's a really nice catch-all term for it. It's a really hard process. But if you go into the classrooms, we would expect to see active learning. The students are responsible for their learning, and the teacher serves as a coach. Our departments are collaborating, and our courses are collaborating. You have heard of unintentional learners? And I hear it all the time. How do I teach my class when I have unintentional learners in my class? I've done everything. I think that we address that by being intentional teachers. I think that we address that by being intentional teachers. And that started for us with the lesson plan. We intend to teach every single student.
Okay, so can I get left hand up if you understood everything that's said so far? Checking for understanding, right, in 10 minutes? All right, excellent. Just want to make sure I'm demonstrating that. This is a copy of the Fillmore Unified School District AGB approved lesson plan. Okay, this document was given to us just right after the October break, currently. And what it is, is that we are due every Friday before we leave. Sorry, question?
Is there a way to bring that a little bit closer? I can read it on here.
Okay. To be honest with you, Virginia, I have to apologize for that, the graphic to fit on the page and everything, the font.
Okay, that's okay.
We can easily, I can easily email you a copy of it. The board is very easily obtained. I would imagine also it exists in the educational office, so there's a copy of it. But let me just try to kind of guide you through this to see what the teachers are doing. It's a daily lesson plan that's due for each subject you teach. So a teacher who has two preps would be preparing two of these for each day. A teacher who has three preps would be preparing three of these for each day, five days for the week, so 15 total if I do the math correctly still. So this document does help organize. It's a graphic organizer. That's one of the things that we're asked to give our students and kind of get them to collect their thoughts and how do we organize our information. It starts off with the mundane, the date, your name, what subject you're teaching, what periods you're going to go to. Right here at this spot, it's talking about whatever your general topic is. Generally, that would be a word that we would just describe in plain English. We're doing equations. The next box over here would be learning objective. That's more where we're tying it to our state standard. We're saying, well, what is our objective? Well, according to the Algebra State Standards, Algebra Standard 3.0, a student will solve linear inequalities, you know, and things like that, equations and inequalities. So you kind of put that in there. What I'm doing also is that I'm making sure that there's a section, where am I taking it out of a textbook? Where am I getting my resources from? There's a space over here for any new vocabulary that you want to teach. We're trying to make sure that we're bringing up the level of how our students express their ideas, either in science terminology, language arts, mathematics, instead of unfortunately be times. Maybe we can get that to be multiplied. Use a more higher level evaluation of the word instead of something a little bit more basic like that. Sure, we understand what you meant. We all get it. That's informal. But as we speak here before you, before any type of formal gathering, you probably want to use a little deeper vocabulary. The other part here is instructional procedure. How will I focus my students? How am I going to get their attention when they walk in the door? Sometimes can be very unfocused after the five minutes of getting them, as they call, you know. That's the practical part of it. A lot of us are using transition-type activities, a warm-up, some type of collective game, group activity, something that grabs their attention right away so they start to know class has started. Generally, also homework. That's a great time to have a kid write down their homework at the beginning of every class. The next part is that recall our prior information. Again, that's part of, lesson plans have started coming out since a person named Madeline Hunter was connected to your prior knowledge. She's kind of a guru in mathematics and kind of set up a five-step or a seven-step lesson plan. What do we, how do we do that? Well, we could use some type of real-life situation problem, a student's prior experience with something. Maybe math class would be last night's homework. What did you absorb? Did you have questions? Did you understand what they wanted to elicit from you in this type of a problem? That's, and again, and I'll get to this part in just a second. And then we start to go into presenting material. Because obviously, there's going to be some type of presentation, and this is where we're starting to try and look at how we teach it. I'm doing direct instruction right now. I'm teaching you about a lesson plan. Okay, so let's go back. Do you understand what learning objective meant? Sorry to do that. I know it's late. Okay. Can I get a right hand? Okay, okay, all right. Okay, sorry. I had to do that. So again, again, you know, we as adults, we have a tendency to go through things quickly and say, you know, here's our presentation. With a student, I would imagine, in all experience, and you have teenagers or now grown adults, right? The 10-minute, the 10-minute period sometimes is even a little too long. You may even want to go down to five to seven. So about every five minutes, seven minutes, no more than 10 minutes of direct instruction, you want to be checking for that understanding. Not only that, not only after I presented material, I want you to try some. I want you to come back. I want you to, okay, can you tell me, how would you transition a class into the classroom? How would you make that first five to seven minutes happen of your day if you were teaching that class? Hey, give me an example, something like that. Or, let me see something, what have you written? Right now, the use of technology in our classrooms, we're all getting into the projectors, the document cameras. It's excellent. I can take a student's piece of work. I can now put it on a document camera. I can now have them visualize it right in front of you. We can highlight a student's work and bring it out to them instead of watching our work all day long. And then, of course, we're talking about illicit performance. Well, what's my performance I want out of you? I want some answers out of you. Maybe it's verbal. Maybe it's a hand raise. Maybe it's a thumbs up. Maybe it's a completed problem on a piece of paper. Maybe it's a successful completion of a project. That could be different for which class you're doing. Could be filling out the graphic organizer in the correct way. Okay, assess performance. Well, we've got to know how we're doing. That's a couple of different ways. I can do a formal assessment. Kids react to that. Okay, I have a quiz coming up. We announce it 24 hours to 48 hours in advance. I have a test coming up. We know there's a benchmark now that we've been developing that we want to put in place at the end of the quarter. So that lets us know, how are they getting it? Another way is informal. Informal could easily be, let me see your paper. Tell me, what happened? How did you get the story? We had an activity done. Can I see the card you were supposed to produce at it? Can I see your notes? So again, there's many ways to check for understanding. I think right now, there's a curriculum committee that's meeting about ways to make sure we are checking for understanding. Take it out the door, demonstrate, come up to the board, write down the problem, show us what you're doing. Now, one of the big parts here that I want to follow in is the minutes. We're trying to plan bell-to-bell instruction. They're doing something. And I know for my own case and some of the colleagues I work with in the math department, we're trying to break that into chunks. Five to seven minutes, we're starting an activity. We're getting them into the classroom. We're getting our homework copied down. We're getting focused for our new lesson. We're starting to, you know, go over homework or get into something that they had before. And then obviously, the new material, and then let me check what you're doing before you leave. So the minutes are very important. We're making sure we're trying to go bell-to-bell. Down here, enhanced homework. Homework is kind of one of those things, sometimes it helps, sometimes it can kind of hold back. Kids can learn without doing homework, but again, I think it's a part we need to stress because we know as we go to the higher levels, we need to be practicing on our own. So there is a place to put homework, whatever it is you decide, textbook assignment, practice handed out, maybe a project, maybe some type of thing I just want you to write about. And then, of course, test question ideas from today's objective. Well, obviously, we're talking about CSTs, maybe leading into a little California High School exit exam. And we're trying to make sure that we're aiming towards those release questions, right? Everybody who studied for the CBAS, the GMAT, I think any of the administrator, we're all taking some type of an exam to get to a higher level. Even the ACT exam, right, to join the military now? Okay, so you know, that's what you're doing. There are plenty of books. Go to Barnes and Nobles. Just go through the test preparation section. You'll see that there's plenty of material that gets somebody ready for that. I tutor people through the ACT math section quite often. So we try to get that from the release questions from the California Department of Education. Documents available online, you know, it's a PDF. Bring it up and share it with the class. Now, after all of that, one of the things that we're trying to work on now is a thing called Bloom's Taxonomy. And of course, there's different levels of Bloom's Taxonomy. And basically, it kind of starts off here at the bottom. Knowledge is kind of the easier thing to acquire. I can probably teach you how to do a problem, what the problem, what the hard part comes in is do you comprehend the algebra or the science concept of genetics that they're teaching, or the periodic table that they might do, or the language art's persuasive essay versus just writing a five-sentence paragraph. Then we want to talk about application. Can I apply it to a problem? Can I get that thinking now that I just, I got knowledge? And now I've got some comprehension? Can I now do something with it? And of course, then we start to move into the analysis, synthesis, and evaluation stage. That's where we really want to be teaching. Ideally, it would be up here in the valuation stage where students make their own determination. They make hypotheses. I think this is going to happen. And then they apply it, and then they able to do something with it. Then after they get the result with whatever they did for it, they're analyzing that result. Oh, my hypothesis was right. That's when I synthesize and evaluate. Okay, or it was wrong. I was thinking all wrong, and I discovered that this is the right way to do it. I think we've all learned something from doing it the wrong way, very common way of, you know, learning. We want to get the data. The data has been a little bit of a drawback sometimes with the paper scanner issue. The lab that we're talking about is 36 laptop computers that were purchased. We're trying to get this third lab set up so that we can bring our students to the lab and have them go online to DataWise, and then take the exam right online. Results are actually given back right at the end of the test. It's also available to us pretty quick. We can print up all the data analysis type of tools we need. It's also the nice part for us is we can import it into our Zingle gradebook. We haven't quite figured out how to get that done. We need a little help from tech, but we can get that done. And it's really not that complicated. It's a little bit of a time, a little bit of cooperation, and that could all happen. Place students in classes. We wanted you to look at our data, not just kind of, oh, well, they, you know, we think. No, they have to score proficient on their CSTs in the last three years to be placed into an algebra class as a seventh grader, because next year, I get them and we're going to teach them some geometry. And we're hoping entire class, I want 35 students. I'd like to say more, and in the future, and do we build that up in the entire eighth grade? But we have to start somewhere. So somewhere is, I know, that class. So we're going to implement some strategies. We're going to try to use the research-based stuff that we know. We want to try to get down to increasing the rigor, the vocabulary used, the type of assessments we use, the type of problems and things we asked our students to do. Well, we're going to try and eliminate those Ds and Fs. We're not going to make them go away, I mean, just by snapping our fingers, but we're going to make sure we focus on each kid that starts to fall below that 2.0. When they start hitting that C, we need to start talking to them instead of that D or an F, that phone call. Keep track of it in Zingle. Start to get some contact with our parents. Differentiate instruction, as been stated by Ellen. We're going to use the graphic organizers. You just saw, we're using one. We want the students to use that. We're talking about primary source materials. If we can get things off the internet, get actual video, get actual document, all the better. We're talking about technology. I love technology. It really has been a time saver for us, but it still doesn't replace learning. And if you've ever tried to install software, right, we've all had the experience. You have to learn technology as well. They're telling how, you know, important it is in our future work world. It is important. Now, I don't think you can even be a UPS delivery man without carrying a pallet. You and you sign, and it's very basic, you know, in a lot of technology. The school did, last year, we purchased these Permittian boards. Students are using them. They're coming to the board. They enjoy a little bit more. There's also a lot of wealth of material there that I can use to help the student learn. Interviews. We want to be able to bring people in. Dr. Nishino, we have a question. Is yours ahead?
Hi.
Sorry.
I was just saying, is that Permittian board the same as the SMARTboard?
Same thing as a SMARTboard, different company. Kind of comes as a package. So it's already the board. There's a mounted, sorry, projector. It's automatically, it's already hooked up to our computers. There's also a sound system with it. So it does allow for easy access to the internet. Again, maybe some instructional videos, just primary resource material. You look Library of Congress and get documents. I do it for a little math history once in a while to show them, some of the folks who were developing their mathematics. Definitely a great resource to have. Also, you can write on it. There's a kind of a wand that you use to write on it. It's great. I can get online. I can bring up my textbook. McDougal Lutell Office is an online textbook. I can take a snapshot of it. I can cut and paste it into a document, put it into the software, and kid and I are looking at their homework from last night and say, do you remember such and such problem from the book? And then there's also elimination of argument about what the book stated, where your help was. We have classzone.com a student can get to. It starts to eliminate a lot of that very quickly. Interviews, a great thing. Dr. Nishino came over and spoke with Miss Fitzgerald's class. We want to get more things like that happening. Lectures, again, maybe we can get a little, you know, uh, Tori Merrill was running Career Day lectures. We've seen a little drop-off. She's been busy with other things like that. But I think maybe even some present board members may have come and spoke in the past. We've had, I remember Chris Corolla came and spoke, is graduating, graduated from the Air Force Academy. That's a great way of learning. Guest speakers, again, goes with lectures. And then, of course, lab experiments. That's definitely the science department. The kids do like that. And demonstrations. Oh, I'm sorry. And then the Permittian board helps out with a lot of the videos and things like that. I'd like to turn it over to my student. Sorry, question?
Can you communicate from one classroom to another using the Permittian board?
If I had, okay, tech, if I had a camera hooked up, I see on this laptop right now, there is a camera installed in the middle here. So if I have a video conferencing camera, but we are using desktops, refurbished ones, but there actually is a USB port I can get that hooked into. Cameras are not that expensive. And then, sure, you can probably Skype or some type of software like that and get between any classroom here or across the world. Right now, we've kind of not gotten that far and something we haven't quite ventured into. But definitely is a possibility, exists, just time, a little bit of effort, a little bit of money. Any other questions?
Just one more. How many of those bars do you have down?
Currently, we have three. Math department was four.
You have three, and then this is in the special education classroom. But it belongs to her.
Yeah. She has her own, she has her own, yeah, Lisa Hardwood, one of our special education teachers, special day class, is that correct?
No.
Okay, sorry. Take that back. She has her own, so she brings her own material. I believe cost was getting about $1,700 for the whole setup. So yeah, it is a little cost prohibitive. I'm sure, right, the tab, I can see that. I'm sorry, take that back. Can you help me out?
A few years, possibly, a few years back, Virginia, New York Program provided two SMARTboards to teachers at the high school. And they were a little bit more expensive at that time, but that was during, you know, the earlier.
They were new.
Yeah, they're new, but yeah, like all technology, right? We all wait till the iPhone comes out two years later, so I can get it for $49 instead of $199. Okay, right, I'm sorry. All right, so, but yeah, they are a great resource. Will it solve all problems? No, but you know what it does? It does engage them. It's more access. It's more things that I can get, and more tools I can use to help them learn.
Engagement is such a huge, huge issue.
Yeah, it does engage, yes. It does engage students much more. Any other questions? Okay. Like to turn over to Heather Atwood?
Hi, thank you. Okay, I'll give you a minute to read over that little quote there. One thing we all know that's really important is making sure that students' needs are met where they're at in the modalities that they learn best. So there are two brains here. There's the passive listening and the active listening. And obviously, you can see the areas that are red are the active pieces of the brain that are engaged and listening. The student who is doing nothing but listening and not actually involved in the lesson has very little of the brain that is engaged or accessed. And then obviously, you can see from the bottom picture that many more pieces of, or pieces, good grief, sections of the brain are being activated, accessed. So as teachers, we have three main steps as students walk into our classroom that we need to make sure that we begin. So we have the content, which is what we want students to know. Where are our essential standards? Where is our map going? Where are we trying to get these students, where are we trying to get these students to accomplish by the end? The readiness, this level here, there's not much we can do about this. This is what happens when a student walks into your classroom and everything that they have come to you with up until that point. Then the learning profile is, as a teacher, how are we going to address those issues that are in that second column? What are we going to do to engage those students so that no matter what their restriction is, they're able to access the material? How are we going to differentiate? So we have collaboration at the middle school. We have it every Friday morning before school, which is a change, is a change because now we are able to meet with the high school. Our collaboration time is the same. Uh, we meet for an hour and the schedule rotates. And we focus on, um, three main questions here. Uh, what we want students to learn, this is the professional learning community model, um, that is research-based. Um, where, uh, how will we know what the student, uh, if the student has learned that, that bit of material? And what are we going to do when they didn't learn it? So these are three questions that are asked each Friday morning um, as we are going through each section of material, depending on what department you're in. So if you're in science, you're talking about science and how this relates to your grade level and what topic you're covering. Um, we have three cycles where we're moving through different groups. So we have the grade, uh, collaboration week um, where we'll meet with all of one grade level, which is a, a nice way for you to see if a student is struggling in just your subject or multiple subjects. Um, we're able to look at the D and F rate and see what we can do as teachers to meet those needs of those students and what interventions, if any, are going to need to be implemented for those students. Um, we look at the CST data and the CELP data so that we can make sure that, um, we're still obtaining our goal. I mean, we all need to be reminded of what, what our steps are to reach our goal as we are getting to that point. The other side of that is department. Um, that is by subject area. So that's, um, those are both areas that we're meeting separately. Um, we have the content and the curriculum, which is all of one, um, subject in all grade levels. So all of history, all of language arts, all of math in all grade levels. Um, and we're able to go over pacing guides, especially now that we have this pre-algebra class um, or we have seventh grade students in algebra. It's really important that there is some vertical alignment within our own site so that we're making sure that students are accessing equitable curriculum. Um, uh, looking at assessments and student work samples. And then we also, like I said before, have an opportunity to meet with the high school. Um, we've even had an opportunity to plan algebra courses with the high school so that the high school algebra course looks the same as the middle school algebra course and so that we can ensure that a student that is able to pass an Algebra I course at the middle school should be successful in geometry just as a student that finishes Algebra I at the high school. And then the last is, um, a school-wide meeting for all staff. Um, and we are using that time to go over teaching strategies. Um, staff members may come and give us strategy that has been successful for them. Or, um, Ellen has come. I know the last, uh, staff meeting we had, she had a bunch of research-based, um, checking for understanding, um, graphic organizers for us to use and to implement and asked teachers to, um, use them and bring back good samples so that other teachers would know better ways to use those materials. Um, so as school-wide, and then you can see the other stuff, going over data. That, I mean, we all know that that's extremely important. We have to make sure that we're, um, able to measure what our goal is and then we're able to obtain that goal and constantly checking to make sure if you're on the right track so that those goals are attained. Yep.
Our big goals, we have three. We want to create systems of intervention to ensure that every single student is getting the instruction that that student needs. So we're tailoring our programs to make sure that we have every single student learner on our campus. We're leaving no one behind. Where did I steal that from? This is a process. We know that it doesn't happen overnight. It's hard. We are having, we are experiencing growing pains and it hurts. We're confined with our budget. We have to make sure that what we implement has sustainability and will last over time. So we're looking very hard at how students are doing and making sure that we develop interventions that work and that we can afford. We want to monitor student progress on a timely basis, which is part of the push for us to get this third computer lab up and running. And you can see, this is a shared responsibility. We want to be able to put the kids on the computer, take that benchmark assessment and get the data back immediately. How great it is for the kids to see what their score was, but better that the teachers get to use that information. And it's all tied to the essential standards so we can see which standards are being mastered, which ones need some more. Our goal, which I talked about in the site plan, is to at minimum make safe harbor targets, which if we do that for two years, we will get out of program improvement. But it isn't good enough for us. We don't want to just make safe harbor targets or shoot for the top.
That's who we work for.
And she's helping us. We talked about professional development. We're receiving support from the district for math teaching strategies. Um, Jennifer Ware's presenting in two weeks on EL teaching strategies for staff. We're working together on differentiated instruction. And that's us digging through books and bringing that back to the collective group. We have DataWise training in, uh, in a week. Avid, the Avid program provides training for three of our teachers that are Avid teachers.
And our site.
Huh? And our site. And, uh, we're working with the county to bring workshops to our site rather than have to go to the county. We care very much about having release time. So we're supporting the practice of paying for subs. We want to see kids actively engaging in all classes. And finally, our biggie is to make sure that we check for understanding every time. These are some of the interventions that we have on site. The sixth grade department started a rotation process. If the student doesn't do their homework, they stay in at lunch and do their homework. And the teachers are rotating responsibility. That has now spread to seventh and eighth. We are not across the board implementing this, but we're very close. So we decided if the homework assignment was important enough to assign, then it is certainly important enough to be completed. And so we're providing a location on campus and, and the opportunity for a student to complete it with a teacher present. The library is open all day long, before school and after school. We now have five computers set up in there. Kids can take tests and, I'm not saying that works. Um, we'll have software on there for them to practice reading and mathematics. Um, the checks in the library are monitoring how the computers are being used. And we have a printer set up for kids to be able to print off their research. Um, tutoring is provided. Our biggest program is through the Bridges program. And we really appreciate having that at the middle school. I appreciate that, having, having not have it at the high school. But, uh, I think we have close to 70 students in there. We did a quick check on GPAs at the quarter one. The majority of the students had a 2.0 or higher. We feel that program is highly effective. Um, the migrant tutoring centers that are scattered around town have told us they'll take any case that will show less. Tutorific and one-two-three success are brought in for our benefit. And we're seeing maybe 25 kids between the two programs twice a week. Academic recognition. I made the principal honor roll certificates. And I started out thinking in October, I'll put this on 3.5 and up. And there were too many. So then we had to figure out, well, what would be a proper recognition? It turned out 4.0 is where we're at. If a student made a 4.0, they get the principal honor roll. And they very much like the front of, the speed pass, front-of-the-line lunch. Um, the ELD courses are level based on the student's proficiency in English. We have, uh, four star essential classes running, which we can do anything we want with those. Those are intervention classes. We're hoping to address reading and math, but we may like to tweak that as we go. We're looking at the success or failure of that program. Um, and, oh, we want to do SMART contests. So we're looking at putting rewards and incentives on accomplishing really great things academically. Oops, you told me not to do that. I'll, I'll just show you quickly. We put together a study sheet for each student that's under 2.0 at quarter one. The study sheet contains all of the state testing, CELP testing. Um, the teachers respond to six questions up there about how the student's doing, what they perceive as the weaknesses, and where they believe the student would benefit. This is helping direct where that intervention will be, and it will be student-specific. This, uh, is bolstered by all the information that we can get, whether they're attending a tutoring program like Bridges. Uh, we attached a report card so that every teacher can see in front of them how their student, whom I had a D or an F, is doing in all their other classes. Uh, we provide their CELP level information so the teacher can see if it's an EL student, how they're doing acquiring English. And then our data, DataWise, our Xangle software, provides us the ability to see for our own students whether they're doing all their assignments in all of their classes. So now the teachers are starting to talk to one another. They're not doing my assignments. I noticed they're not doing it in your class too. We'd like to put them together. So this, the technology's there and the information's there. And every teacher is becoming quite the expert anyways. Is this you?
Mm-hmm. Um, as I look around, I see former students and, uh, very successful people who are educated. And I was very proud of our FFA program. Is that right? I always, I always confuse FFA and FAJ. Okay. Program. Those students were very articulate. And it, it made me warm in my heart. Also, the young man who was advocating for his nephew, very articulate. Those are the success stories. We are the success stories. We're educated, we're successful. But it is disingenuous for any student to claim its purpose is to help all students learn at high levels and then fail to create a system of interventions to give the struggling learners additional time and support for learning. Our team is going to provide the school administration here an intervention plan and schedule. And we have our plan right here for you. We are all departments from PE to math to English to counselors to leadership of the administration type. And we want every child to succeed. And we want every child to succeed through all the methods we've been talking about, through the materials we're going to use, through all the programs that we're going to implement. Because it's not just us that are the community. We want to take those children, those little precious ones, and make them all educated, successful individuals, not just a few select.